All right, let's go.
Call the order, the meeting of the city council. Clerk will call the roll.
Meeting of the January 27th, 2020 meeting. Councilor Adrian.
Here.
Councilor Capone.
Here.
Councilor DePiero.
Here.
Councilor Lee. Councilor Marchese.
Here.
Councilor Martins.
Here.
Councilor Matusky.
Here.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Councilor Appolitano.
Here.
Councilor DeFlorio. Ten members present, one absent, we do have a quorum.
I ask everyone stand to.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask everyone to remain standing, we've lost some residents this week. I'd like to recognize Victor Dragone, Lieutenant Anthony Flumair, Jean Rosa, and Ed Toto. Clerk will read the roll, I mean the order business.
Accept the previous minutes?
We have a motion to accept the previous minutes, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Open public participation?
Have a motion, open public participation, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Public participation is open. Ms. Clerk, is there a list?
It's not, no. Your name, Ms. Mayor.
Good evening. I'll be very, very brief. On the calendar tonight you have two petitions for rooming house licenses. One's at 19 Hancock Street and the other one is at 76 Norwood Street. I would ask that you look at the police reports and see the calls for service and start to question if these are the types of houses we want in our city. So, it's not what I want to see in our city. They put a strain on our, on our community and they're not sanction sober homes where they do drug testing and make sure that people are working, their places, their flop houses for the most part. This is not what I want to see in Everett and maybe you can postpone it, look at these facilities, talk to the neighborhood, talk to the residents and see if we're going to continue on licensing rooming houses in the city of Everett. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Close public participation, second.
Have a motion, close public participation, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read the first item of business.
Mr. President, can we suspend the rules and take item number three?
Have a motion to suspend the rules, take item number three, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number three.
Item number three, Mr. Chairman, is an appointment offered by President Rosario Florio that the Everett City Council hereby approves the appointment of Chief Anthony Colley from provisional chief to chief in the Everett Fire Department.
Councilman Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. We received some emails from a lot of parties today regarding this piece and just a few minutes ago we received an eight-page memo from our solicitor's office and I didn't have time to read that. So, what I would ask is if we could please have our city solicitor or someone from the solicitor's office before us to explain exactly what the memo is and what this body can or cannot do at this present time.
You have a motion, a second, have the, so you're supposed to come up, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Please state your name for the record.
Keith Slattery, Assistant City Solicitor.
Thank you, through you to our guest. Could you please explain, as briefly as you can, the memo and what exactly this, there were, this difference of opinions on different sides on what this body can or cannot do or what this body should or should not do at this particular time? So, before we enter any decision one way or the other, I'd like to get your legal opinion on where we're at.
Sure. Good evening, members of the council. If the question is regarding the validity of the assessment center process for appointing and promoting the chief, that has been determined by, that's been determined by the Civil Service Commission. So, the validity of this process for promotional assessment center allows the city three options of promoting a chief, a fire chief in this case. One of the options is a provisional assessment center, the other one is a test, and the third option would be a combination of both. In this case, the city of Everett chose to take the assessment center route, which in the memo that I had provided you also has a decision by the commission. Now, the decision was based on the fact that the appointment of Chief Colley was petitioned by several candidates for that position as well, and that petition was to the Massachusetts Civil Service Commission. And the petition for investigation into this promotion was based in part on two factors. One is, did the chief have an unfair advantage because of his entitled experience or his experience in the job? The other candidates didn't have any experience as provisional chief. And the other was the Chief Colley's involvement in the planning of the process. Once the municipality decides to take the assessment route, they then hire a vendor that then hires a panel of independent assessors. In this case, Chief Colley only had an administrative role with the vendor, didn't have a role in the process. And if you will look at the decision by the commissioner on page five, paragraph three, undisputed are the scores that are outlined and according to the commissioner's decision, Chief Colley, even if his points were deducted for his in-kind experience, would have had the superior point score for this promotion. The commission, into taking into consideration all of the arguments by the petitioners and the facts that were at their disposal, the commission denied the request for an investigation and as a result, the assessment stands. Therefore, you have a valid and legal process in which this chief was recommended for appointment.
Okay, so, reading this, it looks like the credit was, was it .66?
.66, yeah, less than a point.
His overall score was 86?
Yes.
And then the next closest candidate is 79?
Correct.
So, even if you deduct a full point for that, you're at 85, you're still six points higher than the next person?
That is correct.
What do you say to, I'm not sure what body it's in front of, but I think that there's a grievance in front of, is it Division of Labor or Department?
That, that can be appealed even post-appointment.
Okay.
No issue or no order has been given to this body to stay this vote, so I would still say that the validity of this assessment is legal and stands.
Okay, so, the Civil Service Commission said that the process was fine. There's still something out there, I don't know if it's the union or if it, whatever it is that is pursuing it further. What is, what are the potential outcomes from that body?
Well, the potential outcomes could be a referral to the Superior Court for injunction. Those options will still all be available, but I would still say right now that what's in front of this member body is the acceptance of the recommendation of promotion to chief through a valid process. Right now you have no other authority from a court or any other tribunal to halt that.
Okay.
You have a request.
And despite the fact that something is still brewing from the city's perspective in terms of potential liability, concern, expense, is there anything that we're exposed to if we were to vote tonight?
I do not see any exposure from this.
Okay, I don't have any other questions, I'll yield the floor, my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, can I hear from Craig Hattie from the union, from Local 143, IAFF, please? I am putting out a form of motion, yes. Invite up the president of the union, Craig Hattie.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Please state your name for the record, please. Press the button, turn the light on green.
Craig Hattie, President of Everett Fire Local 143.
Mr. Hattie, thank you for appearing this evening. Mr. Hattie, we just heard from the city solicitor and I believe that I'd like to hear from the union perspective on this position and your feeling representing the members of the local.
All right, as Keith just mentioned, we do have an unfair labor practice with the Department of Labor that Councilman Capone inquired about. That right now, both briefs have been sent in from both sides and we're awaiting a decision on which stems from the assessment center. And the problem with the assessment center was it was never negotiated with the union, so they broke the law on 150E where they do have to talk to us about any change of promotions, working conditions, or anything of that sort. That's how that charge was created, that's why that charge is there. So, we're waiting for the decision on that and I did hear the city solicitor say like different things that were going on in the case on what the charges were, and I'm not going to get into debate about them here, but I mean, we disagree wholeheartedly with some of the things he said there. And what we're hoping for is that this city will go as the past practice in a written exam from Civil Service coming up within, I think, a week or two. It said the end of January. I forwarded the council, excuse me, my secretary of treasurer, Sean Hogan, did a couple emails, would he forward you a letter from Civil Service today that stated back in November, Regina, who's the head of the Civil Service Commission, that they're going to be calling for a chief's written exam as we've always done in the history of the Everett Fire Department at the end of this month. So, that's what our goal is to hope for, that we continue status quo and we promote men the way we promote everyone.
So, Mr. Hattie, has that been past practice that it has always been a written exam?
Yes.
So, this is the first opportunity of doing it differently?
Correct, and we were never involved in the process.
That being said, Mr. Chairman, I believe that it is in due respect to both sides that we make a motion that we refer to government operations, public safety, and public service so that we can discuss this in further detail and understand everything before we make a vote that is going to be one of the most important votes that we take in the history in the city council in the next two years. This is an important vote, I have confidence in the chief, but I want to hear from both sides and to, quite frankly, to get an eight-page memo 15 minutes before the meeting this evening. I'd like to know why the mayor didn't feel it was necessary before putting this appointment before the city council to inform us that there could be potentially an issue brewing so that we would have time to be able to hear from both sides and not wait till the 11th and a half hour to be able to present this as information. I believe if the, if we weren't told about this today, we would have came here tonight, we would have voted for this position and we would have went home without understanding the labor issues or understanding the potential litigation that is ongoing. That being said, I think it is appropriate that we wait the one or two weeks, the chief has been the temporary chief for three and a half years, the provisional chief three and a half years, another 30 days isn't going to make a difference in the city of Everett. I think it is appropriate that we refer this to government operations, public safety, and public service and we sort this out. Thank you.
The Massachusetts Human Resources Department does dictate that the municipality has a right to choose the method of their testing. It doesn't take into consideration past practice and I have not been served with any papers from any department that tells me otherwise or tells this body it needs to stay its decision.
And that's fine, I think that's all sort of stuff that could be hashed out and discussed in committee and that's why we have a committee format so that we can hash these type of topics out. And to be quite frankly, if we had this information on Thursday or before when the council calendar came out, we would have had time to be able to discuss the matter.
I didn't find out about this objection until this afternoon.
Okay, and I, and I found out about it this morning. When I woke up this morning, I did not know that this would be.
So, we all found out today and here I am.
Exactly, you're right, Slattery, and that's why I think it is unjustly responsible for us to be able to vote on this this evening because we have all found this out in the last several hours previous to this. Yesterday, if you would ask me, I knew there was no issue because I wasn't privy to any of this information. And to receive an eight-page document 15 minutes before, I appreciate the due diligence of you putting this together, but there's no way to be able to read this and to be able to sort this out and to be able to figure it out.
I would say that.
So, to vote for this tonight is truly irresponsible for the city council because there are so many loose ends.
So, if someone came up to this body on any of these other promotions and told you there was an action that they weren't providing paperwork for you, you would also delay their promotion?
If there was a topic of such magnitude of this, I would absolutely refer this to committee, which is our due diligence because we have committees for these types of issues that do arise from time to time, and to ask for further information so that we can sort it out and make a sound decision for the management of the city. And it's not about any one individual, but it's about making sure that we are informed enough to be able to make a decision that is sound for the people of Everett. That is my responsibility.
You've got the gentleman that could speak for the union and you've got one of the lawyers for the city.
Correct. So, and so tonight, if that's the case, then I need to take a decision on which side am I going to, on the spot, which side am I going to believe more or which side am I going to side with more of information? And it's not fair to us as city councilors. To be quite frank, I think that the city administration did a disservice by not letting the city council know that this was broken.
I agree there's a disservice, but it's the late objection. It has nothing to do with the administration.
No, no, the, the union is credited for doing what they need to do to protect their membership, there's no question. The administration should have told us.
Now, they could have post amendment remedies then, but right now it's in front of the body and this is a legal process.
Why is it okay for the administration to not have given us information privy to this vote tonight?
I don't know if you heard me, but no one's given me notice or given me any paperwork.
Well, Mr. Slattery, you had to have had some sort of a notice to be able to put this together.
The same as you, you heard about it today, I did too, so I put this memo together.
So, you knew nothing about this previously?
I didn't know anything about this objection.
But did you know anything about this matter, this, this matter?
Do I know that the chief was going to be put up for promotion somehow?
Nope, did you know that there was a labor issue and there was, there was?
Honestly, I have not seen a labor complaint.
Okay, the mayor doesn't, is in privy to this information? Nobody in the administration?
I can only speak for myself and I'm in the legal department and I have not seen a complaint.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to stay with my original motion that we refer this to government operations, public safety, and public service and I put that in a form of motion.
I have three, I have three councils that I want to speak. Councilman DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If someone comes, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time speaking because I had surgery on Friday, I apologize. If someone comes up with the score of civil service, the way I understand it, it still means you don't have to pick them. Is that correct?
That is true.
Okay, so, even a month from now, if someone passes a civil service, the administration has the right to appoint and we have the right to vote for the person that's appointed.
That is true.
We are not here, I love the unions, my family's part of the unions, but we are not here to get involved in any labor negotiations. That's not our job as city officials. We are here to protect the taxpayers. So, if anybody is suing the city, if it is a labor problem, that's not our job. I'm sorry. We are here to protect taxpayers, so I want to make that very clear. I have no problem voting for the chief, you know why? Three years ago, three years ago, when it was three and a half years ago, whenever it was, you came to the public safety meeting, you brought the whole crew and everybody told us how good he was. Now, what happened in three and a half years?
And just to that point, we're not here to stop Tony Colley from becoming the chief, we're here to protect our other union members to have the same, same shot to become a chief of this fire department.
This agenda went out two weeks ago.
I found out on Thursday afternoon.
Well, we found out today, the last minute.
In Thursday afternoon, city hall closed, our lawyer wasn't touched with the city lawyers, it wasn't the city solicitor, but the city hires a company called Metatrall, so maybe that's why Keith Slattery doesn't know about this issue and hasn't seen it, but Bert Mason, who's representing the city of Everett, filed a brief on Friday with this case, so the city has been well aware of our discontent with this being done. And now, the interesting part is why it's being done tonight, because that assessment center was done a year and a half ago. That score that Councilman Capone just come out with was done a year and a half ago and because of our litigation, we believed the city was waiting and now civil services are coming out with a written exam and we believed the city was going to wait for that written exam. We have like three or four other communities around here in the same situation as Everett in like this, with a chief who's been temporary or acting for the last three years and they're now waiting for the written exam, those cities and towns, to keep status quo.
But the point is, it doesn't matter even if those exams comes out, the mayor is still going to appoint Chief Colley.
If he tops the exam, but they have to take a written exam.
But based on this, there was an exam taken?
That's an assessment center, that was not a written exam.
But based on this, we can pick a chief either by assessment or by civil service? Is that correct? Am I understanding that correct?
I don't even know if, who's the same, my brother, who would have an attorney, he acts like one, so I'll say that. But I, I don't think he'd even disagree with that. The municipality has the option and that is the law.
They have the option to go to assessment center, but civil service would even tell them, they, they have to negotiate with the union on the change if they use the other process and we've only used written exams. That's why we have the Department of Labor charge in, because we were not part of the process, part of the change.
Okay, thank you.
The Civil Service Commission also knows these regs up and down, the Civil Service Commission denied, I know the other repellents too, I know them personally, they're some of friends of mine. That's not what we're here for. We're here on the legality of this appointment and this is what the administration did and I, now it's up to you.
And I just want to be clear, Tony Colley is a member of our union, we do not want to hold him away from this position. All as our union is trying to do is, we have five or six other members that would possibly like to obtain that position also and understand when you vote tonight and make Tony Colley permanent, they do not have a shot to become chief ever again unless Tony Colley retires.
So, I just want to comment on what's called a slippery slope.
Excuse me, I, I do understand that, but unfortunately, through past practice, okay, in 14 years I've been here and watching the meetings 20 years prior, the mayor always appointed the chief.
And that chief was the top scorer on a civil service written exam every time? And you could ask the mayor that.
Well, everybody wants change in the city.
Our past chief, Chief Butler.
They want to do business as usual.
Our past chief, Chief Butler, passed a civil service written exam and he was the top scorer again, that's why he was the chief. Kenny Shedd and the previous chief, same situation.
If I could just mention about the slippery slope, so we had four candidates for this assessment, now we're hearing about six possible candidates, that opens another can of worms. There were four people that had notice of this process, there was a department that had notice of this process, four candidates undertook that process and Chief Colley came out ahead. Those are the facts we have. If they, if they think we're going to wait or the administration would wait for an exam or if they reopen this process, six more people would come to try to do the assessment center, right? This is what we have, this is what the city decided and the municipality's right to do so.
When I say six, that's because we have six deputy chiefs, so they're all eligible for that exam.
Okay, thank you.
Have Councilman DePiero, then Councilor Adrian. Councilman DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Slattery, how long has Mr. Colley been provisional chief?
It's almost four years, I think, to my knowledge.
And when did this whole process that the city chose to lay out take place?
Like Craig said, a year and a half ago.
So, it's no secret that the city's intention was to appoint Mr. Colley.
That is true.
You know, I have an ample amount of respect for gentlemen on each side of this argument. To me, this just seems like a lot of in-house back and forth. I mean, from what I see, that gentleman scored the highest in that process, he's done the job, he's picked up the phone and answered emails every time I've reached out to him. And I think the question we ask ourselves here tonight is, is the department a better place now than it was when he founded? And I think that's accurate. Every budget season when he's before us with what he lays out, he's honest with us, the process has played out, I think the gentleman should be made the chief and I move for favorable action.
Councilman Adrian.
So, I just wanted to make a comment about how on Thursday when we received the agenda with this item, I questioned the police chief, yep, I'm talking to the chair, to the police chief as well as to the fire chief, who also went back and sent the email, CC Kevin O'Donnell. I asked if there were any concerns with any of the promotions or if there were any issues that we should be aware of before we make this decision and I came back saying there were none, there were none. And so, for me to come here on Monday to see that there is this whole dispute going on when I asked about it on Thursday, that's a big concern for me. And I feel like it's not appropriate right now for us to make that decision when we just got this information.
Right now, we're in, we're in, we have guests before us, I think the appropriate court of action would be to ask the city solicitor if at this point, the city has received any official notification. Because without an official notification, they don't notify us about hearsay. So, I would direct that question, do you still have the floor? I would take that.
I get the question, I, I haven't seen it, Craig says that it was processed on Friday, so you wouldn't have gotten that answer on Thursday.
I got the email response on Friday.
Okay.
That said that there was none.
City hall wasn't open, I wasn't here, I did not know if there was, this again, came by surprise to me too. So, if that's a tactic one way or another, that's, that is also of consideration, but what you have before you is again, a valid process.
Councilman Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to our guests. Mr. Hattie, I want to understand the concern from the union side. It's not necessarily the individual, it's the process. You're saying the assessment center process, that the union wasn't involved with that? How, how should the union have been involved, do you think?
From my understanding, the reason why we filed a charge under 150E, the collective bargaining laws, we have to be involved in any change of working conditions, any change of promotions, any change of work within our membership. So, we, granted, we couldn't dictate on what we wanted, but we should have been able to sit at a table and know it was going to happen. We found out about this assessment center when the city said, here it goes. And tonight, be aware, I mean, the council, obviously you have any way to vote any way you want, we sent you those emails today just for information for you to understand what is going on. If tonight, if this does pass, we do have in our contract, section 5.2, that states no one can be promoted permanently if there is any outstanding grievances there. So, with a good vote tonight, with a positive vote to make him, now we have another grievance that we'll have to file to protect, like I said, our other union members.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Slattery, if you could address that, what, what do you say in terms of whatever the shift in process was to go with the assessment center? Should the union have been involved, is there an issue? And then, if you could speak to paragraph 5.2, I don't know if you were.
I haven't been able to look at the grievance.
Okay.
The grievance could bear no fruit. I know what the law says and it's in this memo and the municipality and not unions have the right to determine this process and that is what we're here for.
Okay, and so, and under the assessment center course of action, the union does not necessarily need to be part of that?
Not that I'm aware of, I, the law that is also in this memo states that it's the municipality's discretion is to pick one of the three methods.
Okay.
This isn't the first city that's done it, I wish I had done some research in my readings, I did come upon other cities that have done it this way, I just can't recite them for you right now.
Have you had an opportunity to review this paragraph 5.2 that's being mentioned?
No, I have not, no.
Okay. All right, I don't, I don't have any other questions then.
Councilman DePiero. Counselor DePereaux.
First, I'd like to excuse our guests.
Do I have a second? All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
As Attorney Slattery has said, Mr. Colley has been the provisional chief for three or four years. I understand the union's issue is with the shift in process. The gentleman has essentially been the chief for a handful of years now. I mean, the administration could kick this down the road and just leave provisional in front of his name for as long as they please. Let's take this vote tonight. I call for the question.
Right now, we only have one motion before us. There were two, but one wasn't seconded. The current motion before you is for favorable action. It's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Adrian.
No.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePereaux.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
And Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Nine ayes, one nay, you have so appointed a chief to the Everett Fire Department. Chief, now this works. You ready? Aye.
Aye, Anthony Colley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As chief for the Everett Fire Department.
As chief of the Everett Fire Department.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules.
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Laws.
Laws.
Ordinances and charter.
Ordinances and charter.
Of the city of Everett.
Of the city of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Anthony Colley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I'll support the Constitution.
That I'll support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Anthony Colley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And I'll support the Constitution.
And I'll support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, chief.
All right, before we, before I entertain the next motion, I just want to mention that Counselman Hanlon would not be with us this evening, he's called, he's not feeling well. We wish that he, wish him, you know, good health.
Mr. Chairman, I suspend the rules and take item two.
Can we suspend the rules and take items two, four, and five collectively?
Yeah. And then I'll vote on them separately.
Your motion to suspend the rules, take items two, one more time, two, four, and five collectively. Do I have a second? All in favor?
No.
Posed? Aye. Clerk will read the items.
Mr. Chairman, items two, four, and five are all appointments offered by Counselor President Rosa DeFlorio. Item two, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the promotion of the following Everett firefighters, to Lieutenant Scott Dalrymple, to deputy chief. Item four, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the promotion of the following Everett firefighter, Lieutenant William Hurley, to captain. And item five, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the promotion of the following Everett firefighters, privates Michael Baldwin and Eric Keller, to lieutenant.
Favorable action, item number two? Clerk will read the roll.
Item number two. Excuse me, item number two, Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePereaux.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
And Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
It'd be nine ayes, zero nays, you have so appointed the lieutenant to deputy chief.[921.12][921.12](APPLAUSE). Raise our right hand. Aye.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As deputy chief for the Everett Fire Department.
As deputy chief for the Everett Fire Department.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules.
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Laws.
Laws.
Ordinances and charter.
Ordinances and charter.
Of the city of Everett.
Of the city of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Scott Dalrymple.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I'll support the Constitution.
And I'll support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Scott Dalrymple.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And I'll support the Constitution.
And I'll support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Deputy Chief.
Favorable action on number four?
Second.
We should prepare to latch on number four, and second it, clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePereaux.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays, you have so appointed Will Hurley as captain in the Everett Fire Department.[1074.83][1074.83](APPLAUSE). Ready? Raise your right hand, repeat after me, Captain. Aye.
Aye, Will Hurley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a captain in the Everett Fire Department.
As a captain in the Everett Fire Department.
Sorry, according to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules.
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Laws.
Laws.
Ordinances and charter.
Ordinances and charter.
Of the city of Everett.
Of the city of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, William Hurley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I'll support the Constitution.
And I'll support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, William Hurley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And I'll support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Chief.[1161.41][1161.41](APPLAUSE).
Yep. We got clerks missing.
Oh, the clerk's missing. Mr. Clerk, you have a motion.
Favorable action number five?
Second.
I have a motion for, I have a motion for favorable action on number five, it's been seconded, clerk will read the roll.
Excuse me, Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePereaux.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Ten ayes, zero nays, you have so promoted the two privates, Michael Baldwin and Eric Keller, to lieutenants. (APPLAUSE). Are you ready?
Yes.
All right, raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Michael Baldwin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a lieutenant in the Everett Fire Department.
As a lieutenant in the Everett Fire Department.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules.
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Laws.
Laws.
Ordinances and charter.
Ordinances and charter.
Of the city of Everett.
Of the city of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Michael Baldwin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I'll support the Constitution.
And I'll support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Michael Baldwin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I'll support the Constitution.
And I'll support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Michael Baldwin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And I'll support the Constitution.
And I'll support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All the hierarchy.
Lieutenant, are we ready?
We're ready.
Hold it closer to me. Raise your right hand, are you ready? Let us begin. Aye.
Aye, Eric Keller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a lieutenant in the Everett Fire Department.
As a lieutenant in the Everett Fire Department.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules
Agreeably to the rules
Regulations
Regulations
Laws
Laws
Ordances and charter
Ordances and charter
Of the city of Everett
Of the city of Everett
So help me God
So help me God
Aye.
Aye, Eric Keller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance
That I'll be a true faith and allegiance
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts
And I'll support the Constitution
And I'll support the Constitution
And laws
And laws
Of the Commonwealth
Of the Commonwealth
So help me God
So help me God
Aye.
Aye, Eric Keller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance
To the United States of America
To the United States of America
And I'll support the Constitution
And I'll support the Constitution
Of the United States
Of the United States
So help me God
So help me God
Congratulations, Lieutenant. You good?
Fable action item numbers...oh, actually, we need to take...can we spend the rules and take item number six?
The clerk will read item number six. Item number six, Mr. Chairman. There's an appointment offered by Counsel Rosa DeFlorio as President that the Everett City Council hereby approves the promotion of Kenneth Kelly, Nicholas Cristiano, and Paul Dussablon to sergeants in the Everett Police Department.
Fable action.
Fable action. Do I have a second? Clerk will read the roll. Counsel Adrian.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Lee.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Counsel Martins.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Polatano.
Yes.
And Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Ten yeses, zero nays. You have promoted officers Kelly, Cristiano, and Dussablon to sergeants. Think it's a little better. Is this two of yous? All right, sergeants, raise your right hand. Are you ready? Aye.
Aye, Kenneth Kelly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll faithfully and impartially
That I'll faithfully and impartially
Discharge and perform
Discharge and perform
All the duties incumbent upon me
All the duties incumbent upon me
As sergeants in the Everett Police Department
As sergeants in the Everett Police Department
According to the best of my abilities
According to the best of my abilities
And understanding
And understanding
Agreeably to the rules
Agreeably to the rules
Regulations
Regulations
Laws
Laws
Ordances and charter
Ordances and charter
Of the city of Everett
Of the city of Everett
So help me God
So help me God
Aye.
Aye, Kenneth Kelly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll be a true faith and allegiance
That I will be a true faith and allegiance
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts
And I'll support the Constitution
And I will support the Constitution
And laws
And laws
Of the Commonwealth
Of the Commonwealth
So help me God
So help me God
Aye.
Aye, Kenneth Kelly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the United States of America
To the United States of America
And I'll support the Constitution
And I'll support the Constitution
Of the United States
Of the United States
So help me God
So help me God
Congratulations, Senator.
City Council is going to take a 10-minute break. Baldwin family to the rostrum, please. Baldwin family.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, revert back. Mr. Chairman.
Please revert back to the regular order of business.
Item number one, Mr. Chairman, is an order offered by Counsel Rosa DeFlorio as President that the Everett City Council hereby approves a donation of $2,500 from ExxonMobil Corporation to the city of Everett's fire department's safe fire donation account.
Accept the donation.
Chairman, so I just wanted to bring up my concern with voting for this tonight. So ExxonMobil, if many of you guys do not know, right now the conservation fund law is suing ExxonMobil because they are harming residents in the city of Everett. So right now, there's been nine counts of a lawsuit against ExxonMobil because of the harm that they're doing to the residents of Everett. So I wanted to just bring this up as a concern. That's one of the reasons why I'm not going to vote for this, because I don't think it's okay. I think it's somewhat of a conflict of interest. When I found this out, that ExxonMobil as a corporation is being sued for what they're doing to the city of Everett, I just didn't feel comfortable with accepting a donation from them. And so I just want to read a little bit of a snippet of what's going on, because it sounds like many of the council members do not know about it. So last year, a judge in the Boston Federal Court allowed a climate change lawsuit to go against ExxonMobil. They face nine counts in a federal lawsuit. It alleges residents living near the company's oil terminal along the Mystic River has been at risk by the toxic chemicals from the facilities as storms intensify and sea levels rise. There are parts of community organizations in our city who are also part of the lawsuit. So once again, this is just a concern, and this is why I will be voting no about this, because I think we need to first understand what is happening with the lawsuits, how it's harming the residents of the city, and make sure that we're doing good by our people. Thank you.
I'm just asking for some clarification. Are you saying that the city of Everett is suing Exxon?
No, the conservation fund law. The conservation fund law is suing ExxonMobil because they're saying that the harm they're causing to the city of residents in Everett.
Specifically, it mentioned the city of Everett?
Yes, yes. So if you actually go onto the website, on the homepage, it says it. It says ExxonMobil is causing harm to the city of Everett, and we are suing them because of this matter. It says it right there. And there's also an article about it. I could send it along, but this is a concern, and I don't think it's okay for us to accept any donations from the ExxonMobil until we figure out what is happening. I also received a phone call from one of the parties who is part of the lawsuit, a community organization here in Everett, and they said once again that this is a concern and that this is a conflict of interest. But that's it. Thank you.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. This President does keep our assistance city solicitor have any light that he could shed on this, because I'll be honest, I was not privy to this until Counsel Adrian showed it to me, and it does raise major concern for me.
Are you inviting him up?
I would make a motion if he has information to share. Okay. No, then you know what? I think it is appropriate that we send this to Ways and Means. I'd like to, A, find out what the Everett Fire Department's safe fire donation account is. Public safety, I'll make a motion that we refer this to government operations, public safety, and public service, so that we can further investigate this, because I do echo the comments of Counsel Adrian that we should not be voting to accept donations from organizations in which are harming our community in any way, shape, or form. And I do credit her for not voting for another one a week ago, and I was not aware of the facts on that one, but tonight I will not make the same mistake that I made two weeks ago. Thank you.
I second that.
Counsel DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the motion, I appreciate Counselor Adrian's information, but in today's world, anyone can sue anybody. I'll defer to the court system to hash out that litigation. As of now, it is a business that operates in the city of Everett. They want to donate money to our public safety resources. I will not say no. So I am against that motion.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know 20 years ago, there was a TIF agreement with Exxon. Unfortunately, I don't know everything that was in it because I was not here then. So I did put on the agenda for next time to have the administration give us a copy of that TIF agreement. I believe they have to give us so much money for our public safety. So it's money that's going to public safety. We have nothing to do with lawsuits. So what are we bringing up lawsuits over here for? I don't get it. I really don't. This is money that's being donated. We are not suing Exxon. Whoever's suing Exxon, it doesn't matter, okay? I believe it's in the TIF agreement. We'll clarify that in a couple of weeks, but it's money coming in for public safety. We'll clarify that in a couple of weeks, but it's money coming in for public safety reasons, and there's no way I'm, I'm sending this to public safety. I'm ready to vote on it.
Counsel Marquezey.
What does Exxon do? Well, this is what I'm asking you, though, is that, don't they, so we drive cars, right? So what's the issue all of a sudden about Exxon Gas? Am I missing something? They've been there for how many years? Forty, fifty?
Longer than that.
Well, I don't know.
Seventy or eighty years.
Don't mean to be offensive, but sometimes the nitpicky gets to me, and I'm ready to vote on this tonight.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I don't want to belabor it, but I, I do want to, I do want to state that I understand and I appreciate the concern from my colleagues that were talking about Exxon. You know, we do have to look at the impact on the community that certain companies do. It's been a longstanding company down there, down the line. A lot of people have been affected negatively. The bottom line is, accepting the donation isn't condoning their practices. I think it's a reflection that they understand that the facility down there does take a lot of our resources, our public safety resources. And we take the money to offset some of that and to try to lessen the burden on the taxpayer. If we don't take the money, then that burden falls on the taxpayer. It's not condoning their practices, which I do agree are dangerous and harmful. There's another route for that, but I, I will be supporting accepting the money, but I, I do not want my colleagues to misunderstand the intent of my vote. I do appreciate what they're saying, and there's a lot of merit to it, but the, when, when a company is presenting money to the community, that's going to offset a burden for the taxpayers, it's not a quid pro quo by any stretch of the imagination. It's a reflection on the additional strain that it puts on our public safety budget. So I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I know that Exxon has had a good relationship with the Fire Department here in Everett for many years, but you know, they're, they are a billion-dollar company, billion. And, you know, $2,500 is a nice donation, but they throw donations around like manhole covers, okay? They're not the most generous company in the world. That's my backyard where those tanks are, okay? From my deck, I get a nice view of them, and half of them are empty. I think that Exxon should have to come up here at some point and explain this lawsuit, but that would have to be introduced, I believe, at a later meeting, but I, I'd be more than happy to agree with Counsel Adrian on that. But, you know, $2,500 is a great donation from a billion-dollar company, very impressive. And I've had issues with them, with the lambs going off for months, you know, and I had to get that addressed, but their outreach to the community is not what it should be for the kind of company it is. But I'm going to vote for the, the donation, because, well, they may not give us another one. Thank you.
Okay, from the chair, I just want to read something from Exxon. Per the attached form, please acknowledge receipt of this grant. So this donated amount is from a grant that they've received, that they're passing on to the Everett Fire Department. And of course, as most of you are aware, this is not the only donation we'll see from Exxon. I mean, I agree that if there's a suit going on, we need to be more cognizant and be more aware of it, but money going into the city is still going, money going into the city.
Counsel Matuski was the last member to have the floor. I do have two members. Okay, Stephanie Martin has not, Counsel Martin has not spoken yet, and I have one counsel wants to speak again. So Counsel Martin, you have the floor.
I just wanted to briefly, briefly say that I do support discussing this in committee, because it is an important concern, and I do agree that especially if you're harming the city, you should be paying more, but I am definitely voting favor, favorably in accepting anything that's going to public safety.
Counsel McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the chairman. Again, I would echo the comments that I made originally, which is, I don't know what the Safe Fire Donation Account is, and I'd like to get a clarification on what that account is and where the money goes to for that account. Secondly, the more information that we...
Well, Counselman Chief Colley is here. Invite him up, and let's get your answer.
Well, I'm sorry, I did not see him in, in the audience. Can we make a motion, invite up Chief Colley, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Chief, for the record, if you'd just reintroduce yourself.
Chief Anthony Colley, Everett Fire Department.
Thank you for coming up.
Chief, could you, can you just tell us what this fire, the Safe Fire Donation Account is?
Sure. So the Safe Fire Donation Account was created before I was chief, and it was designed for people that wanted, whether it's organizations, businesses, or even residents of the city, wanted to donate in some way. On occasion, we do get requests. It was actually created, and, and the family's name escapes me, I apologize, for a woman who died in a kitchen fire several days after being burned, and her family wanted to do something for senior safe and things like that. So that's where the, the account was created. So we just, the, the safe account is just used to house donations, in particular, the one you're speaking of tonight, the ExxonMobil donation. They've been giving that to us, again, probably about five, maybe even 10 years. And what they do is, it's almost set up like a scholarship. Every year, we try to send several members down to Norfolk, Virginia, to shipboard firefighting, and they provide this, the $2,500 is a, like a scholarship for somebody to go down there.
Okay, I, I, that's what I was looking for, so I'm glad that I was able to get my answer, because after five or 10 years, I did not know what that answer was. So I appreciate the information this evening, although I do echo the comments of my colleagues, that that lawsuit does need to be looked at closely by our city. Yes, excuse me, right, Mr. Chairman. I, no further questions, I excuse our chief for customary thanks. Thank you for appearing this evening, chief.
No problem.
Does any other members have any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Your pleasure.
There is a motion that was made in second, and so unless we've drawn it, it's for Ways and Means, to be referred to Ways and Means, so that's...
So right now, there's one motion on the floor to refer this to Ways and Means?
Which will take precedence.
Okay. That would take precedent.
That takes precedence.
Takes precedent. The second motion was favorable action, correct?
So...
Okay. Clerk will read the roll for the first motion to send this to...
Actually, it's not a roll, sir.
It, uh, no, it's a voice vote.
Mr. Chairman, on the motion, if I may, just to echo to my colleagues, we are not a court, we are not a high court. We don't decide on lawsuits. When the litigation is over and a decision has been made, then we can have a conversation. Take their money. You folks do what you want. I'm voting for favorable action.
Okay, so right now, the motion before you is to refer this to...
Ways and Means.
The Ways and Means. All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
No. That motion has failed. Now, the motion before you is for favorable action. It's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
Favorable action. Counsel Adrian.
No.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DePero.
Yes.
Counsel Lee.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezey.
Yes.
Counsel Martins.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin.
No.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
And Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Eight ayes, two nays, you have so accepted the donation.
Clerk will read the next order of business.
I'd like to move, suspend the rules, and take item nine. Very much required. We do have guests here for that.
Item number nine, Mr. Chairman, is a transfer offered by Council President Rosa de Florio, that the Everett City Council hereby approves an order to transfer $210,000 into the Police Department Salary Account. This is due to the settlement of FY '20 contract between the City and the New England Police Benevolent Association, Inc., Local 94 Patrol Offices, for the period of 7/1/2019 through 6/30/2020.
Counsel DePero.
Thank you, Chairman. Just briefly, I'd like to invite either the solicitor, I don't know if Mr. Demas is here, just to give us a quick breakdown. Either one or both.
What are we doing then? Could we suspend Rule 13?
If a representative from the union...
We have a motion to suspend Rule 13. It's the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
For the record, it's the state's name.
Thank you.
Good evening, Keith Slattery, Assistant City Solicitor.
If you gentlemen would have mine, explain this, how we got to this point, and what we look like going forward.
So actual negotiations, you know, are closed and confidential, but the basic details are the length of the negotiations. They started back in the early spring, and the casino was getting ready to open up and ramped up, so it was really all hands on deck for the Everett Fire Department at that point. Had delayed negotiations for a little bit, waited till the early fall to resume, and, you know, struck the deal that has been provided to you. The details of the major changes are sick buyback leave. Just so you know, the, the administration's thinking on that was that it helps reduce overtime costs, and that's been proven through other cities like Boston that's implemented that. The Quinn Bill after 10 years, you know, ensures that we get good recruits and candidates, and also educated and qualified members, and lateral transfers. And the medical administration stipend is, is a parody stipend with other departments that have to deliver Narcan to overdose victims. Obviously, a deal was struck between both parties, and we didn't have to bring this to the Joint Labor Management Committee, so that's why it's in front of you today.
Thank you, gentlemen. I know we're not here to really discuss if everyone's happy with how we got to this, but this is here for approval. I'll be voting for it. Thank you.
If I could, just one quick question. Do we still, do we still have the Quinn Bill in the city or the state?
The state actually doesn't have Quinn anymore, but it's, the municipalities can have a Quinn replica.
So if, so if someone was there 10 years, they would get a 25% increase in their salary?
If they had the qualifying education.
College education?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does the representative from the union want to say anything?
Counsel, are you making, are you making a motion to invite Bob Hall?
Uh, yes. So make a motion to invite Bob Hall, thank you.
Aye.
Good evening, Robert Hall. I was the Local 94 Patrol Man's Association President during the last two negotiations. I'd like to introduce Jermaine Bilad, Officer Bilad. He's, has now taken over as the president, but since I was privy to these negotiations, I can answer some questions. I just, Mrs. Slattery said, stated, we had started in the early spring, and with public safety as our first priority, we had to table everything, get the casino up and running. Our membership believes it's a fair offer. The city has to look out for the taxpayers, we understand that. My sisters and my 94-year-old mother own home, homes in the city, so that is a big part of what goes into what the city is offering us. So again, we think it's fair, and if you have any questions about a specific item that Mr. Slattery can't answer, I can, for instance, the 25%. Cities and towns that surround us, some of them, day one, when they come in, they get full Quinn. If they have a master's degree. So, so it's not funded by the state. They call it Quinn or educational incentive. So cities around us, such as Malden, they get full educational incentive after five years. Malden, I believe, day one. Boston Police gets it, Cambridge Police still has it, and what the city did to be fiscally responsible, and the union agreed to it, is to do a tiered type of payment, where new officers that come in that have an education, they get a stipend for the first five years. After five years, they'll get half the equivalent of what used to be Quinn, and then once they're here for 10, then it would kick in. And that helps with the city as people are retiring. So as older members like myself that have a bachelor's degree retire, newer members come up, like Officer Bilad, his will kick in after 10 years. So through attrition, the city, and we thought it was the best way to fund it without burdening the city too much at once. Any other questions about any other line items from our point of view?
Just one more question. So we have our own Quinn Bill, so state does it off.
Right, so there's education...
Okay, so we have our own Quinn Bill in the City of Everett. Do all cities do this?
So it's, it's called educational incentive, not all cities do it, but majority of cities that surround us now have it, in one way, shape, or form, either two stipends and then increases, some more than others, some quicker than others. There is talk up on the Hill that they will revisit this. I know that the state police were in negotiations, and, and probably next contract, they're going to get it. So it's coming back through contract negotiations that the cities and towns are funding them. Years ago, if anyone doesn't understand, the, the state funded half, and the city picked up the other half, and 2009, when we lost it, we, we took smaller percentages and able to keep that with the hopes of maybe getting it back in the future. And again, this tiered system, as younger officers get in, they don't get the same benefit, obviously, as the older officers, and it, it helps the city plan financially. Thank you.
Do declare this as a routine item. Your pleasure.
Favorable action.
The motion favorable action, second. Clerk will read the roll.
Counsel Adrian.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DePero.
Yes.
Counsel Lee.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezey.
Yes.
Counsel Martins.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Ten ayes, zero nays, you have so passed the order.
Suspend the rules, take item 10. The motion to suspend the rules, take item 10. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 10, Mr. Chairman, is an appropriation offered by Council President Rosa de Florio, that the Everett City Council hereby approves an order to appropriate $3,656,346 from the budgetary fund balance into the following funds. General Stabilization Fund, $1,096,904. Other Post Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund, $1,096,904. And Capital Improvement Stabilization, $1,462,538.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we please have Mr. Demas before us?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Eric Demas, CFO.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest. With regards to these individual accounts, after we add, what are we looking at for a balance in each? Do you, do you have that by any chance?
Uh, this, after you actually make these appropriations.
Correct, correct.
In the general stabilization account, the order before you is for $1,096,000. You currently have $3.7 million. So that'll put us at about 4.8.
Okay.
The CIP stabilization is currently at $3.4 million. This order is to increase that by an additional $1,462,000. And then our OPEB stabilization is $6,070,000, and with this order, that would increase that to another $1,096,000. The OPEB trust stabilization, $6,070,000.
And that one's probably one of the more crucial ones. It's one that we're trying to, to build up, the, the post-employment benefits. With the...
In long-term, not short-term.
Right, right.
Long-term, not short-term.
Exactly, exactly. And so, if you could, for the members and for the viewing audience, if you could explain the benefit to the additional 1.4 to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund?
Well, I'd actually categorize your general stabilization, as well as your capital improvement stabilization, in similar respects, being that when you look at the financial statements, there's still a component of your general fund fund balance, which is where the city likes to sound financial practices. You want to be anywhere from 16 to the 20%. Given what's happened with funding various departments over the past few years, specifically large appropriations to the school department, the city's general fund, undesignated or unreserved fund balance, of which these two accounts are a component of, were down closer to the 12%. So it's important to start building those reserves back up. Your general stabilization account is typically referred to as your rainy day fund, as if, you know, something happens, the economy takes a turn, and you can only reduce your budget by a specific amount. You don't want to put that burden on the taxpayers, so it's used as a funding source during turbulent times in the future. That significantly has been drawn down in the past few years, and that can be used for any purpose. The capital stabilization fund is similar to your rainy day fund, but it's specifically for capital-related items, although you're not bound to capital-related items. If the city council so chose to use those funds because something extraordinary happened, they'd be able to. Whereas your OPEB trust fund goes into an irrevocable trust and is set aside.
Okay.
The only other thing where I wanted to clarify between short-term and long-term is that I know there's a lot of talk about OPEB, and it was brought up during the task force report that was presented to the mayor and city council. There is a plan to fund OPEB. As of right now, the city is on track to fully fund the pension system by 2030. At that point, once the pension... At that point, once the pension system is fully funded, that additional appropriation that we're playing catch-up, as most every other community is, right now, based upon our most recent actuarial valuation funding schedule, that's about a little over $15 million. So in 2030, the plan would be that additional appropriation that we no longer have to make into the pension fund would then switch over and start being deposited into the OPEB trust fund, start tackling that liability. I shared that information with the task force. They said, you know, that's great, that's Boston's plan, but Boston's fully funded in 2025. I said, well, we're only five or six years behind, and we're not Boston, so that was our measured approach.
And so, once we make that switch, we're able to do that, once we're fully funded with the pension by 2030, how long do you think it'll take us to catch up on our post-employment benefits?
Well, we're in the process of actually having our actuarial evaluation updated. We're required by auditing standards, as well as accounting principles, to have that audit updated every two years. The reason why I don't want to give that into a specific number is because every year, as a component of free cash, like the order that's before you, free cash fluctuates, and city council has the ability to put percentages of that into OPEB. I don't know what free cash is going to be between now and the next 10 years, so it gets difficult to figure out exactly what we're going to be able to put until the time in which we can start transferring those large pension appropriations and direct those into OPEB.
So if we were talking about a more modest contribution, you know, that way, if there's a windfall, then we could make a larger contribution, but if it were a more modest contribution, perhaps maybe a million dollars a year, or something like that, how long do you think it would take us to get to the point where we're funded enough?
The most I'm willing to go beyond that is it would probably take about another 15 years after we had gotten to that point. There's a lot of variables that are used to come up with that actuarial liability. There are many factors that could have an impact on that. There could be changes in actually state law. There could be changes with the state actually providing a portion of that funding. The city could change their medical plans, which with OPEB, primarily, the big liability is the fact that our retirees, after they retire, are still on their medical plans. And given the fact that as you age, we tend to see the doctors more often, and our healthcare costs go up.
Exposure goes up, sure.
In addition to that, our population, our aging population, I don't know where our population is going to be now into the next 25 years.
Tend to live longer, and you expect that the exposure would increase as time goes on, but I know that you're aware of it. I know it's on your radar screen. I know it's something that we've talked about, so as long as we have a plan in play, that's the best you can do. So I appreciate it. No other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Excuse customary thanks. Your pleasure, gentlemen.
I would actually just have you declare this routine.
Declare this as a routine item. The motion for favorable action. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Clerk, read the roll.
Favorable action on item number 10. Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiro.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
And Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Tenye, zero nays. You have so passed item number 10.
Yeah. Have a motion.
Spend the rules, take items seven and eight collectively, please.
Do I have a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Ayes have it. Clerk, read item number seven and eight.
Item seven and eight, Mr. Chairman, are orders both offered by Counsel President Rosa DeFlorio. Item seven is that the Everett City Council hereby approves a donation from Kathleen Donnelly in the amount of $200,000 to be donated to the Pollan Memorial Library, and will be deposited into the library revenue account. Item eight is that the Everett City Council hereby approves a donation from Kathleen Donnelly in the amount of $200,000 to be donated to the Shute Memorial Library, and will be deposited into the library revenue account.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could have the acting director before us.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Ayes have it. Please state your name for the record.
Natalie Tanzi, Assistant City Solicitor.
Just, the microphone's off. Here you go.
Excellent. Natalie Tanzi, Assistant City Solicitor and Acting Library Director.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest. First of all, obviously, it's a wonderful request. You know, every community would be so lucky to have someone who appreciated the library in their earlier years to make this kind of a donation. I see that we split it between the two and put them in the library revenue accounts. Are there any immediate plans for the money, or are we kind of hold off to it and try to figure out long-term benefit?
So for immediate plan, it is going into a fund. We have spoken with the family, we've met with the family quite a few times, to gauge both their interest and the interest of Ms. Donnelly, to better allocate that money toward things that, you know, would best reflect upon her life. Without a doubt, whatever it goes toward, be it one single thing or many things over many years, her name will definitely be bearing some significance toward it, because, like you said, it is an incredible gift.
Yeah. Okay, so the only thing that I would leave you with then is, because it is such a substantial amount of money, and I know that we're actively in the process of trying to hire a director, and when you have a full-time director, that individual will be putting together some sort of a longer-term plan. I would ask that we kind of hold off on spending too much of this until we get that in place, we can figure out what would be the best expenditure for it going forward as a library. So I just want to impart that with you. So with that, I have no other questions. I yield the floor.
Any other questions? Excuse customary thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
On the piece, favorable action with a letter of thanks to the family.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for favorable action, with a letter of thanks to the family. Clerk, read the roll.
This is for item seven. Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiro.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
And Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Tenye, zero nays. You have so passed item seven.
Favorable action on item eight, again, with a letter of thanks to the family.
The motion for favorable action from eight, second. Clerk, read the roll.
Yes, sir. You're welcome, Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiro.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
That would be nine ye, zero nays. You have so passed item seven.
Favorable action on item eight, again, with a letter of thanks to the family.
The motion for favorable action from eight, second. Clerk, read the roll.
Yes, sir. You're welcome, Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiro.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
That would be nine ye, zero nays. You have so passed item seven.
Favorable action on item eight, again, with a letter of thanks to the family.
The motion for favorable action from eight, second. Clerk, read the roll.
Yes, sir. You're welcome, Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiro.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
That would be nine ye, zero nays. You have so passed item seven.
Favorable action on item eight, again, with a letter of thanks to the family.
The motion for favorable action from eight, second. Clerk, read the roll.
Yes, sir. You're welcome, Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiro.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
That would be nine ye, zero nays. You have so passed item seven.
Favorable action on item eight, again, with a letter of thanks to the family.
The motion for favorable action from eight, second. Clerk, read the roll.
Yes, sir. You're welcome, Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiro.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
That would be nine ye, zero nays. You have so passed item seven.
Favorable action on item eight, again, with a letter of thanks to the family.
The motion for favorable action from eight, second. Clerk, read the roll.
Yes, sir. You're welcome, Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiro.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
And Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Tenye, zero nays. You have so passed item seven.
Favorable action on item number 12.
Second.
For the last item on 12, second. Clerk, read the roll.
Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiro.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
And Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Tenye, zero nays. You have so passed that order.
Favorable action on item number 14.
Second.
Favorable action on item 14, second. Clerk, read the roll.
Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiro.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
And Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Tenye, zero nays. You have so passed that order.
Favorable action on item 15.
Mr. Chairman, as a petition offered by President Rosa DeFlorio, that the Everett City Council hereby approves a Redemption Center license renewal for Dan's Redemption Center at 107 Hancock Street.
Mr. President, through you to our clerk, any concerns or issues with this business?
No, I haven't received any calls this year on this business, and all papers are in order.
Favorable action.
Second.
Favorable action, second. Item 15, Clerk, read the roll.
Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiro.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
And Counselor DeFlorio. Tenye, zero nays. You have so passed item 15.
Clerk, read the next item of this.
Item 16, Mr. Chairman, these are.
Can we spend the rules and take items 16 and 17 collectively?
Second.
Item 16. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Ayes have it.
Do we spend the rules and take items 16 and 17 collectively?
Second.
Item 16. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Ayes have it.
Following two items are Committee on Community and Business Development Committee reports. Item 16, petition that the Everett City Council hereby approves a lodging house license renewal for the Bill Moore House at 76 Nord Street.[1331.38]
Twelve is that the Everett City Council hereby approves a class-two motor vehicle dealer license renewal for Ferry Street Service and Auto Sales at four sixty-four Ferry Street. Thirteen is that the Everett City Council hereby approves a class-two motor vehicle dealer license renewal for Light Auto Sales and Repairers at three sixty-seven Third Street. And fourteen is that the Everett City Council hereby approves a class-two motor vehicle dealer license renewal for Parkway Auto Sales at sixteen seventy-three Revere Beach Parkway. To the council's point, yes, all papers are in order, all sign-offs have been done, and most of them actually have already paid.
Okay. Favorable action, item number eleven?
Second. Favorable action by number eleven, second. Collectively, the law.
Item eleven, Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matouski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Ten years, zero days, you have so passed.
Favorable action, item number twelve?
Second. For the last time, one twelve, second. Collectively, the law.
Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matouski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Ten years, zero days, you have so passed item twelve.
Favorable action, item number thirteen.
The last one, the thirteen, is second. Collectively, the law.
Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matouski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Ten years, zero days, you have so passed that order.
Favorable action, item number fourteen.
Second. Favorable action, number fourteen, second. Collectively, the law.
Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matouski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Ten years, zero days, you have so passed that order. Item fifteen, Mr. Chairman, is a petition offered by President Rosa de Florio that the Everett City Council hereby approves a redemption center license renewal for Dan's Redemption Center at one oh seven Hancock Street.
Mr. President, through you to clerk, any concerns or issues with this business?
No, I haven't received any calls this year on this business and all papers are in order.
Favorable action.
Second. Favorable action, second. Item fifteen, collectively, the law.
Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matouski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Ten years, zero days, you have so passed item fifteen.
Collectively, the next time, the business.
Item sixteen, Mr. Chairman, these are...
Can we suspend the rules and take items sixteen and seventeen collectively?
Second.
Item sixteen.
All favor?
Aye.
Close. Aye, have it.
Following two items are Committee on Community and Business Development Committee reports. Item sixteen, petition that the Everett City Council hereby approves a lodging house license renewal for, at the Bill Moore House at seventy-six Norwood Street. And seventeen, petition that the Everett City Council hereby approves a lodging house license renewal for the Hancock Hotel at nineteen Hancock Street.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thanks, Mr. President. Are these the two items that we had before us two weeks ago that refer to community and business development? You met this evening, so I apologize for having a previous commitment and couldn't make it to that committee meeting.
The both these items are actually for the committee meeting.
Okay, and was the owner or the property manager present?
The owners here as well as both management groups.
Okay, is there a report? Because I did refer this to committee two weeks ago because I was concerned and I do share the same echo and comments of the mayor this evening on these two items, and I apologize again due to a family commitment this evening I had to attend to prior to the meeting, I could not be here for committee meetings, but is there a report that you could outline for us?
The meeting was, was earlier this evening. I'm not sure if there's a physical, if there's a physical report. The owner of the company was here as well as each management group from both, both properties.
And what was some of the explanation for the extent of...
If you want, I'll relaunch the floor. Counselor Marchese is, is next and he is the, he is the chairman, he can, he can fill you on more detail.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Yield for it, Counselor.
Counselor Marchese.
The two pieces, the two pieces that you acknowledged, two weeks ago we sent them to committee because there's a lot of things on there, incidents that happened inside and outside the property. So taking in consideration what may have happened outside and some of the incidents that happened, we don't know if they came from outside or in. So what we made an agreement today was to grant them their licenses, but in three months they, we're going to secure, which will be first meeting in May.
May first.
First meeting in May, we're going to get another police, police report on both of them. If there's a continuing method of what's going on, they will probably proceed to take the license. But we just, you know, the first time I'm up here, I'm seeing those, I don't know what's inside, what's outside, because that's why we sent it here, because there was a lot of incidents. But I, I, we're gonna give them three months, see if they clean up the rack. If it comes back and there's lengthy things, then we'll take the action on it. I thought that was a fair way to, you know, approach it.
Counselor DePiero.
Thank you. I'm fine with that probationary period, Mr. Chairman. You know, the mayor made me think about this earlier when he said that and what Counselor McGlaughlin said. I mean, these places aren't sanctioned sober houses, they're not offering any mental health resources, they are essentially flop houses, there are no regular drug tests, and my colleagues have seen the, the, the quality of life in the neighborhood deteriorate because of some of these places. Going forward, I don't want to see any more of these in our city, and I'm fine with the three-month probationary period, we'll see where we're at then. But going forward, I, I really don't believe I'm gonna be voting for any new licenses, that's for sure, to try to curb this, unless they're an approved program house. Thank you.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I mean, I, I was here, but I didn't, I didn't hear everything that happened in committee. And I understand that outside, you can't blame the people of what happens outside. But this is happening right in their front door, so they should be able to control it. They should have a property manager there that should be able to control these kinds of activities. I'm not voting for this tonight, and I've never voted against any licenses in the city of Everett.
Counselor Capone. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna echo the sentiments of the committee chairperson. You know, this was sent to committee because we all did have a concern. We saw a lot of incidents on these addresses. The, I think we were gonna vote for it that night, but we said, let's put it in committee and let's let these individuals know that we're watching them and it's a concern for our community. I think that they got the message loud and clear tonight. We made it very clear that we want them to be a good neighbor. The reality is, even though there were a lot of incidents on those papers that mentioned those addresses, as the chairman mentioned, many of those just happen to be in the general area. We can't necessarily attribute it to that business. We did make it very clear, though, that we're granting the license under the understanding that we want to make sure that they understand what our concerns are as a community and that we will be looking at another report in the beginning of May. And if we still see any significant activity like that, we have the authority to pull the license, and I think that that would be the proper way to go, to give them the opportunity to move forward with the understanding of what our community is all about. And if they can be a good neighbor, great, and if they can't, we can pull that license. And that's what we decided to do.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just curious, I know that there was a name change of the ownership of these properties a few years ago, the Corridus Group. Do they pay, is this a non-profit group that runs these two? This is a different property?
No, I believe these are for profit.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not aware.
So they do pay taxes?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you know, it's, you know, you look at, it is a business. How many units are in these buildings, apartments? Does anybody know? Just curious. That's, that's the brick building on Hancock Street?
So nineteen Hancock Street has three floors, thirty-five rooms, and seventy-six Norwood Street has three floors, twenty-eight rooms.
No, I, I agree with a probationary period, but, you know, you'll notice in those reports, and I've noticed over the years that the clerk has provided the information, that sometimes he's a medical, you know, you'd be quite surprised, as you know, I'm affiliated on School Street. This morning, we had a, a young lady from the Chelsea Street Mental Health Facility on Chelsea Street come in at seven-thirty in the morning, she asked about a guest that was there. I said, well, I, I haven't met him, but I know he's, he's registered here. Well, we haven't heard from him in three or four days. This is an example of what, I said, oh, well, we'll check, we'll check the room. Sure enough, he was in the room, but he went in, out in an ambulance because he was, he's got issues. But just for the record, I mean, there are instances where medical calls, and you take that into consideration, Mr. Clerk, am I right?
Yes.
When you do this information.
Yep.
I'm just giving you an example. So I told the woman who was his aide or, you know, overseer, and she goes, no, I just called, I called for an ambulance. But I'm just giving you an example, there was no police activity. But there are cases where there was some violence and that has to be cleared up. These are nice neighborhoods, that's Everett Square. We just found out we're gonna have a, the Puvier Building after fifty years is gonna do something nice there. And I don't know the man, and I don't want to put anybody down, but for fifty years it's been a night, it's been a mess there. Excuse me? It's about time that they clean up that corner. But I'm just giving you an example. That's gonna be a twenty-three-room luxury hotel with a restaurant in the bottom. But that's Norwood Street, there's other business that's on Norwood Street, so I'm not familiar with that building at all, but, but I appreciate the clerk's information on a quarterly basis and I will keep an eye on this stuff, too. Thank you.
Counselor Capone. I just had a little bit of clarification there, I just have one request.
I have two others, respigs.
Mr. Chairman.
I actually have Counselor McGlaughlin ahead of you.
I yield.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the good work of my colleagues on the committee. My only concern is anybody can run a good course for three months and have a good, good run, stretch for three months, and then on the fourth, the fifth, and the sixth month, it goes back to being the old, same old, you know, game that had been played. Again, Mr. Mangen just handed us this report again, and I'm sorry, I haven't looked at it a moment since this second, but it does raise concern to me, and I'm not sure how to fix this problem, and I'm not sure that we should give them another, another pass. Has this company been before us before for...
Not in my tenure.
Not in your tenure?
Nor in, in...
Then that's fair enough. If they have not been here for disciplinary action in the past, or they're for other issues?
Neither one, yeah. Not as city clerk or assistant clerk.
Then I'm okay, we're giving the three-month grace period for them to try to clean up their act, but I can assure them that after three months, we're not gonna just turn away and we're gonna continue to follow these properties over the course of the next year. But the three months is, I think, sufficient if this is the first opportunity.
I would add from the chair, 'cause I was at that meeting, the owners and the management do track these incidents, so they have a sense of what's going on, so this isn't a surprise to them. So they're able to identify what's internal, what's external. Okay. Counselor DePiero.
Thank you. Is that three-month review mandatory or is that up to us to call them back in three months? I'd like to make that mandatory, that in, that in three months, they come up and review us, because anywhere else in the private world, if you live somewhere and don't pay rent, you get thrown out. If you live somewhere and don't abide by management's rules, you get thrown out. If you're intolerable, you get thrown out. Let's make a statement as a city, get them back here in three months and let's look at this thing. Thank you.
Counselor Marchese.
But I thought we worded it that way. If we didn't, was, was put...
If there was an issue, we have to...
Well, the issue is, well, we have to make sure we secure a three-month situation, you know, whatever's going on down there, a, what am I looking for?
I, I just...
A police report.
Just so you know, I, I provide quarterly reports that, that gets sent to me by the police department.
Oh, good, then the world will expect that.
They supply every quarter.
We'll expect the next quarter coming in, and to answer my colleague, Counselor McGlaughlin, you know, if they rev it up after the three months, come the following year, we'll just pull it. We gave them the chance, we could pull it, if it, if it doesn't improve, we can pull it now and during the summer, if they don't control it, they're gonna come up here again. So if they want to live on a short lease, that, that'll be, we have the right, we'll pull it then.
Counselor DeFlorio.
I just received this, so, in regards to this list, what is...
That was distributed two weeks ago.
Right, first meeting.
The...
This is the copy, no, I understand. But according to this list, right, they did determine what was outside and what was theirs. Is there, what's the...
It's a mix.
It's a mix. How much? Fifty, fifty?
Forty-five, forty-five. So I won't be checking for six hundred and thirty, but we...
Okay. Okay. Party hit with a bat.
Yeah.
Both parties.
It's significant enough that we wanted to talk to you.
I mean, there's some serious things over here. This isn't the element that we want in our city.
Is this, is state one, who was granted one eighty, is it for that? So look. Seventy-six and nineteen.
These people draw...
If the people are voting yes, it's nineteen, voting yes.
Okay. Thank you. I, I mean, I, I know the committee has worked hard, and I really don't want to go against the committee. I mean, they had the meeting, they asked the questions, and it's, we have a committee for a reason. I don't want to go against the committee. I really don't want to vote for this, but I'm gonna go with the committee. They, they did the research, as long as it's mandatory for him to come back after three months, then I'll go for it. Other than that, only if there's issues.
Well, when you kept the position for, you left the position. I want them back in three months, but that position. If there is no reason, we have no legal basis to give them the decision. We have, it has to be...
In other words, the...
There's going to be issues in the future, for, you know, you're gonna take in...
So why can't we invite...
In other words, the intent was that we would get a...
Update, update us.
The intent was that we would get an updated police report on May first. Based on that police report, we'll make a determination whether to call them back in. If they get on May first, there's nothing on there, why would you drag them up?
Yeah.
So the committee is gonna request this, this report?
We have.
Yeah.
That's part of the, it's part of the, it was part of the recommendation of the committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Martins.
So first, I personally requested this report the first time around, and then I was notified that, so I'm not sure how they're keeping track of these incidents, 'cause it was after my request that the manager requested the same report to see what the incidents were. So I'm not sure what their procedure is, and it's, I was actually at the committee meeting and I should have asked that question, but, so I will vote in favor of our decision to have the three-month update. But when we look at the actual counts, there, a lot of them, they are involving the inside of the, you know, the apartments, like narcotics found in the jacket inside the apartment, a dispute between a manager and a tenant breaking an entry, so it's pretty significant.
You're assuming.
Yeah.
General, general change.
Right. And this is for a year, and we have all these pages.
I have a motion.
Favorable action as stated for three months. And, uh, so, so favorable action with the provision of three months for the...
Second.
Item number sixteen. I don't know, I'm, uh, item number sixteen. Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matouski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Ten years, zero days, you have so passed item sixteen. Do you want to make the same motion?
Can I have a motion again? Item number seventeen. Accept the committee report, favorable action.
Condition... Yeah, with the, same condition. I jot, the, I noted that. Counselor Adrian.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Martins.
Yes.
Counselor Matouski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio. Ten years, zero days, you have so passed item seventeen.
Clerk, read item number eighteen.
Under new business, item number eighteen, Mr. Chairman, is a resolution offered by Counselor Michael J. McGlaughlin, that a, a request that is honored the mayor come to the next city council meeting to discuss the possibility of purchasing, purchasing and staffing a community shuttle bus for our seniors so they can enjoy the many activities posted throughout the community, including monthly senior socials.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had been approached by many seniors, as I'm sure most of my colleagues have been, that they would love to be able to head to the Conley Center and enjoy the many activities that are offered there, or head down to the square during the tree lighting ceremony, or go to so many of our other community events that we have throughout the year in the city of Everett. But unfortunately, the method of transportation is, is not habitable, is not able to be done. And during different events, I know Counselor Matouski does it down at the Shava Club, it's a Thanksgiving dinner, he, he volunteers to give rides, and other colleagues of mine, we, we try to help out when we can to get seniors moved around the city to different events. But I know surrounding communities like Melrose and others have a bus shuttle service that they house, in-house, and they pick seniors up and they move them around through their council and agent. And talking with some of those folks, I got to understand the great benefit that they are able to offer their senior community by having this simple shuttle bus. And we know that over the last few years, we have been fortunate enough to gain many new revenues of funding in our community. And I don't think that it would be a small token of appreciation to our seniors that we are able to purchase this bus, and obviously, we're not gonna be able to pick you up at every one of your houses, but we pick you up at centralized locations, or we go to each of the senior buildings, we make some sort of a bus route around the community that can move people around. And it's not every day, but it's during certain events, and you try to get them to the monthly senior social or to other activities. So I'd like to ask the mayor to come before us to, to offer his suggestions or his thoughts on this, and hopefully, he will support me in this initiative to be able to give back to our seniors that have given so much to our community with this simple request of being able to get them transportation to our many community events. Thank you.
Counselor DePiero.
Agree wholeheartedly with the counselor from Ward Six here. Maybe before we spend the money, we can see if Mystic Valley Elder Services or one of those organizations, doesn't have to be them, but another organization we do business with in the city, possibly donate one, 'cause I know Cataldo Ambulance just donated a van to the Condi family, so maybe we can work out something similar. That's it. Thank you.
Counselor Matouski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with this resolution sponsored by Councilman McGlaughlin. Our seniors should be a priority in this community. Other communities do have a shopping van that takes them to stop and shop, or even McKennons, even, you know, McKennons is on the hill, but it, some people just can't make it. And if they had a ride, I know that they would use it, or to the Mystic Mall, not the Mystic, the gateway, anyway, you know, it's something that was in place years ago. They had it when Director Gentour ran the rec center, and it was run out of there, it was an older van, it lasted, and I think we had one recently.
Not too long ago.
Not too long ago. Not too long ago. But, you know, not only for the Conley Center for rides to the various events, but for picking up prescriptions. There are people who just can't get out of the house, and I know plenty of them. So I agree with this, and I hope the mayor will take this resolution seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. It, it is a, um, an issue that obviously we all, we all share, and, uh, my colleague brings up a good point. Uh, you know, we talk about, uh, not having vehicles in the city, using public transportation. Uh, we've got the programs down at the senior center. Uh, we're going to be putting money into the Conley Center. And one of the biggest concerns that, that I know we've all heard is that the great programs, we can't access them. And I think that before we spend the money, we absolutely should try to see if there's any other avenue, whether it's a donation, or maybe it's a service that, you know, the city contracts with a service, uh, to go to some of the buildings, uh, in, you know, seniors can go to, from the neighborhood, could meet at that spot, take them to the social, take them to the Conley Center. Maybe it runs on a cycle where you go to the square, you run your errands, you know that the, the shuttle's coming around at a certain time. So there's a, there's a tremendous, uh, opportunity here to really help, uh, the seniors that don't have transportation, uh, and try to minimize vehicles on the road and still allow them, uh, the ability to, to take part in all of these functions that the city does offer. So I think it's a wonderful piece. Uh, I'd love to put my name on it if the council would agree so. Um, but I know it's something that we've all talked about.
I would also like my, uh, name attached to this if I could.
Now that it's on, are you, no, so, love to also, uh, add my name to it. I appreciate you bringing this up. It's a much-needed addition, and, uh, we hear a lot of concerns about parking around the Conley Center, so that would be great in terms of accessibility and just getting our seniors to the events and just giving back to, to them.
Counsel McGlaughlin, several of my associates have asked to be included. The call, it's up to you.
So, Mr. President, I, uh, would, uh, ask all of my colleagues if we wanted to join together and bond together on this piece and make this a resolution from the entire city council. Um, not speaking for Councilor Hanlon, but I know that Councilor Hanlon is on board with us. He and I have talked about this many times, so I don't want to put his name to it, but I know that he's supportive. So if all of my colleagues wanted to join together and make this as a united, uh, front to be able to, uh, get this done, I would be, uh, more than happy to have everybody on board. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Your pleasure.
Favourable.
Make the motion.
Postpone it.
No postponement.
Have the mayor come and choose.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You vote to postpone that till the next meeting? Clerk will read item number nineteen.
Item number nineteen. Mr. Chairman, is a resolution offered by Counselor Michael J. McGlaughlin that is honored the mayor consider using sixty-five percent of Encore Casino revenue to reduce taxes in the city. Counsel McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, uh, this, uh, goes back to a topic that Counselor Marchese brought up, which was seventy-five percent, and the mayor, uh, vetoed that and set that back to us unfortunately. So I thought that maybe, uh, sixty-five percent might be more appetizing to the mayor. Um, seeing that it is the taxpayers' money, I think that we need to give them something back. So if sixty-five doesn't work, don't be surprised when I offer fifty percent, or I'm going to continue to offer something until the mayor comes and agrees to give some percentage back to the taxpayers. It's their money. We deserve to give some of it, or honestly, all of it, but some portion of it back to the taxpayers. So I would ask the mayor to, to give us his opinion on sixty-five percent of the Encore money and try to work with him on trying to find a number that is suitable for both sides so that we can deliver some, uh, much-needed tax relief to the, the residents in the city of Everett. Thank you.
Counselor DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Instead of going back and forth to see who likes which number better, why don't we send the piece to Ways and Means and have a discussion with everyone and see a number that works for all. That's a motion.
Do I have a second?
On the motion.
On the motion, Counsel McGlaughlin.
The, the only problem that I have with that is that I think that this is a topic that is important enough that all of our colleagues should have input on, uh, delivering tax relief to the people of Everett. Should be a, a matter that we're all concerned about, and I know that we are, are trying to give back and trying to burn, release the burden on our taxpayers. So I think that committee would be, would be okay, but I think that everyone having a voice at the table on this matter might be more suitable for all of our colleagues.
Counsel Martins.
So I think this is a, a longer discussion, because there are different, um, aspects that we can control to manipulate the tax, uh, the taxes and not just use Encore revenue. So I'd love to hear more from the city as to our solutions as to, uh, which, which pieces we can move to really reduce our taxes without just using the Encore, because I'm sure there are different solutions that we can come up with, uh, if we play with different factors that would affect the tax rate.
Counsel Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just was curious if, uh, when the mayor did veto this for the seventy-five percent, I think the entire city council at, well, last year voted for, uh, was there any explanation to what, what he thought was a reasonable application to the tax rate?
So, it, it violated Massachusetts finance laws. You, you, you as a legislative branch of government cannot dictate how much percentage or what you can do. That's why he vetoed it. He was obligated to veto it, because if you, if it was law, it was unenforced.
Well, there again, uh, my question.
So no percentage will matter.
Why weren't we notified? I, I never got an explanation.
Yes, um, there was.
I never got anything that said that.
That it came back on, I.
I don't know if the councilman would have put that on the agenda tonight if he had that information.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was, I don't, what is it?
The veto, wasn't the veto on our agenda?
Yeah, yes, the veto was an explanation.
Oh, but three, but three councilmen, I, I recall, uh, three councilmen voted to keep the seventy-five percent.
Yes.
Marchese, myself, and, and McGlaughlin.
But I, I had the explanation from KP Law that, that.
I like that in writing. You know, rather than send something to committee that we have an explanation for, and I happen to be on that committee, I, you know, I, I don't see the point. You understand? Uh, you know, I never received that, and I'll be honest with you, I do pay attention up here. All I know is it was vetoed and I never got the explanation. Now I know.
Yeah.
But could you provide, uh, you know, every member, in the mail?
Yeah.
Uh, if they want email, give it to them in the email, because I never heard that before.
Yeah, I'll provide, I'll provide the.
I wish we could apply the seventy-five percent, I'll be honest with you. But, uh, if we can't, we can't. And that's the, you know, I wish I had known that. Now I know. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll provide the, yeah, I'll provide the information that was provided to me.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. DeFlorio, uh, why don't we also invite the chief financial officer to see if this is financial stable? Sometimes we all want to give money back to the taxpayer.
You can't do it anyway, so we got.
I know we can't do it. What I'm trying to say is we all want to give money back to the taxpayer, and I know why you can't do it, because Goffa, the casino goes out of business, we're going to make up the seventy-five percent. So financially, we need to understand that from the chief financial officer. It's not because we don't want to give the money. If, if we could give the whole hundred percent, we would do it. So based on that letter, I understand we can't. That's what I'm saying. We can't do it.
I believe that, if my understanding is, the explanation was that we cannot attach any percentage.
Right. Okay, so.
No sense of sending it to committee.
There's no sense of sending it to committee. What I was going to say, why don't we postpone it for two weeks until the council gets the explanation in writing? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Counselor Marchese.
I, I just think to go back on this whole thing, I know percentage, percent, percentage should be whatever the mayor wants to give. So we can't send it, but the mayor can send any percentage or any amount he wants. All, the only thing that they can't touch out of all that, but it is five million that's, that's directed towards public safety. So everything over five million is, is, uh, which is fair game. So that's the way I look at it, and that's the way they should be looking at it down there also. It's five million, only five million of all that money is dedicated to public safety. And so, other than that, well, whatever, it's, he's got to determine it.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, when we took that vote way back when, the seventy-five percent, I, I said, I don't think it's legal, but I don't care. I said, the idea was we wanted to send a message. Now, we got sixty-five percent on there. The bottom line, we all know this, we've all heard this at every doorstep. Nobody would have asked for a casino in their community if they didn't think their taxes were going down. Now, I know that the mayor has said that he wants to reduce the taxes. He understands that. We all get it. So we can't dictate the amount, but what we got to do is we got to keep banging on it to say that we need to give some sort of relief. Now, I don't know if the body wants to keep it on the agenda for the next meeting and have the mayor and, and CFO come in front of us and explain how we're going to do it, or it is a big enough me, you know, it is a big enough purpose if you want to have a special meeting and have them here and discuss how the administration sees these funds being utilized going forward. I think it's a very important conversation we have to have. So I'll leave that up to the body whether they want to have it at a regular meeting, or if you want to make this the subject of its own meeting, have the CFO, have the mayor, and the mayor has got to be here personally on this one because it's a policy decision. His assistant cannot explain what he's thinking. His assistant cannot read his mind and answer our questions. So this is something that is significant enough that this body has talked about more than, I don't know, fifteen times. We need to give relief to our community. We would not have voted for a casino if we thought it was going to be a shiny building with lights. There's got to be a real tangible benefit to this community. I personally would request we have it as a separate meeting so that we can talk about it at length, but I'll leave that up to my colleagues. If I could, just from the chair, let me just make one thing, because there's no misunderstanding to discuss for our new people. We can make the request, but it's a non-binding resolution. Okay? It's a non-binding resolution. So the question is, how much time and effort do you want to put into a non-binding resolution? Okay? I'm just making sure everybody understands it. I'm not disput, I'm not disputing the necessity, I'm not disputing the importance. I'm just making it clear. We personally, we cannot do an order and force it. We need to have a conversation, but it has to be in the form of a non-binding resolution. And we need to understand that if the mayor has other plans, how that money is spent, our suggestion is that, just a suggestion. And I think it's important, but I want to make it clear so people don't get the wrong idea. See in the paper next week, city council orders the mayor to do this. We can't order the mayor to do this. Okay? We can ask.
If we have a leave of the hall, we can ask.
That's why I just keep stressing to everybody, it's a non-binding resolution. Okay?
Many of the hall, I don't know if there was a second?
Okay. Um, before we go on, I've got, one speaker needs to, everybody is, almost everybody has spoken, but I have someone who wants to speak a second time. Counsel McGlaughlin, this is your piece.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. That, I wholeheartedly agree with you, and that's why I use the word "consider" using, because we can't dictate the mayor to use any percentage of it. We can ask him, will you consider? And if it makes it better or makes it easier, we'll strike off the sixty-five percent. And would it, the mayor consider using a significant amount of money from Encore revenues? I don't, I don't, the sixty-five percent, seventy-five percent? Let's have a discussion about what he and we think can be reasonable to help the taxpayers in the city. Percentage-wise, I just threw a number, another number out there, because I'm, I apologize that I wasn't in the room.
It's my pleasure.
I would like, I'd like to send it to committee, committee of the hall and ask for a meeting as soon as possible.
We already have that motion on the floor.
Do you want a motion for us to send this to the committee? To send this to a committee of the hall?
Yeah.
It's been seconded. All in favor?
On that motion, on that motion, we need to have the CFO here, and we need the mayor personally to be here, because this is a policy decision. No one can speak quietly.
Just on a question, uh, Mr. Counsel.
Counsel Matusky, please.
Counsel President, you know, I, see, I never got that memorandum, why it was vetoed, okay? That's, that's where some of the confusion is here. The mayor, I never got a copy of that. You know, I don't know what's wrong with giving a piece of paper now and then to people here. I have no clue. But this wouldn't even be on the agenda tonight if the councilman got that information. He just said that. So, you know, it isn't fair to us not to get this paperwork, if you want to put it that way, in the mail or on the desk. But I can't see the point of getting thirty million dollars from a casino and not lowering the taxes. That's crazy. Who ever thought of such a thing? All this development on the parkway?
Yep.
Taxes got to go down. Come on! It's ridiculous. That's why I want to see that piece of paper. Who's fooling who here? Come on!
Counsel, we'll, we'll get that to you, okay?
Okay, so we have a motion to, uh.
Committee of the Hall.
For committee of the hall, invite the CFO, personal invitation to the mayor. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I mean.
The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number twenty.
Chairman, is a, is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael McGlaughlin that is honored the mayor and the CFO appear at the next Ways and Means committee meeting to discuss increasing the stipends for boards and commissions in Everett. Counsel McGlaughlin.
Thanks, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I, uh, again, we have taken in a significant amount of new revenues in the city of Everett, and we have boards and commissions that work significantly harder than, uh, many, honestly, around in the surrounding communities. On our Board of Appeals, our Planning Board, last week, there was a Board of Appeals meeting right here in this chamber that lasted until midnight. You're making a hundred dollars a month to come to two meetings, and you have a meeting until midnight on ten very large, meaningful projects in the city of Everett. These members are doing serious work that are going to enhance our community and transform our community for decades to come. And for a hundred dollars a month, I really believe that we need to start thinking about how we can compensate them for their time, their efforts, their due diligence, because they don't just come to the chambers, vote on a project, and go home. I know many of them that visit the site, they walk around, they talk to the neighborhood, whatever the case might be. And I believe with the new revenue sources that we've had, it might be time that we can maybe make some meaningful impact to thank these members that have served for decades on these boards and to also make it more enticing so that we can get in some new clientele. I know the mayor always struggles to be able to find members to put on different boards and commissions because of, because it is so time-sin on their time. So let's make it somewhat appetizing so that they're willing to give up a Monday night, or they're willing to give up a Tuesday night to be able to serve on these. So I'd like to ask this be held over for two weeks and to ask the mayor to come and to give his opinion on whether or not we can afford to give these boards and commissions some due, uh, justice but, and thank them for their efforts. Thank you.
Okay, and as per our, our rules, council was referring to committee, uh, so no other members will be able to speak on it. Uh, we have a motion to send it to committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number twenty-one.
Item twenty-one, Mr. Chairman, is a resolution offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero, requesting that Representative Encore Boston Harbor and the mayor's office appear at the next Government Operations Committee meeting to discuss employment data in relation to Everett residents.
Counsel DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we've all gotten calls, we've all gotten emails, we've all watched the news. So just want to get informed of what's going on, where the numbers are, and where do our residents stand as far as employment. So I'd like to refer this to Government Ops.
Second.
Okay. Once it goes to committee, only the, only the spots can.
I can ask to amend the piece, but I, I'd like to meet the new manager of this casino, okay? I mean, when is that going to happen? The new president. I mean, come on.
We have a motion to send it to committee. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number twenty-two.
Item twenty-two, Mr. Chairman, is a resolution offered by Counselor Jimmy Trylee, that the fire chief come to the next Government Operations Committee meeting to explain the plime vent system in the Everett High, the old Everett High School fire station and several other questions regarding plime vents.
Counsel Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, in regards to this, uh, fire station that, uh, they are, they are housing a lot of trucks within the school building, the old Everett High Building. Um, I'd just like to move to refer this item to a committee on, um, public safety and invite the chief, Chief Carley and Craig Hardy.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, send this to, uh, Government Operations, invite the chief, fire chief, and, uh, the head of the union. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number.
Mr. President, spend the rules and take items twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight collectively.
Uh, Mr. Capone, sorry. Twenty-four is a, a Planning Board one, so we have to just automatically send it to them, but the other ones were right.
All right, I, I'll.
Could you amend that?
Yeah, if we could take, spend the rules, take items twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight collectively.
Okay, motion to take twenty-five, item twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight collectively. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read the items.
Items twenty-five through twenty-eight are all, Mr. Chairman, are all ordinances offered by Counsel Rosa DeFlorio as President. An ordinance better document the violations that may, may lead to suspension and or ratifications of licenses and permits issued under the authority of the city council. Twenty-six, an ordinance documenting the procedure to report and, and process complaints and licenses and permits issued under the authority of the city councils. Twenty-seven, an ordinance consolidating the city's general business regulations. Twenty-eight, an ordinance allowing the city council to revoke inactive licenses and permits issued under its authority when their supply is limited.
Move that we refer these items to rules and ordinance?
We have a motion to move these four items to, uh, rules and ordinances. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Yeah, I, I. I'll go back to twenty-four, right?
Twenty-four?
Yep. And, yeah, because it's, the first time it's being read, remember, we had to reintroduce it. Item number twenty-four is a, one, it's, Mr. Chairman, is an ordinance offered by President, uh, Rosa DeFlorio. An ordinance amending section twelve of the zoning ordinance is creating new subsection thirty-four short-term rentals.
Refer to Planning Board?
The motion is to refer item number twenty-four to the Planning Board. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number twenty-nine.
Item twenty-nine, uh, Mr. Chairman, is an order offered by Counsel President Rosa DeFlorio, an order calling for the election and setting up of the polls for the twenty-twenty presidential preference primary.
Favorable action.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Clerk will read the roll.
Counsel Adrian?
Yes.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Marchese?
Yes.
Counsel Martins?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Polatano?
Yes.
And Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Uh, that would be eight yeas, zero neas, you have so passed, uh, the order to open the polls.
Clerk will read item number thirty.
Item number thirty. Mr. Chairman, is a resolution offered by Counsel Girlie Adrian, that the city review the snow removal ordinance to include de-icing and to shovel a certain number of feet of the sidewalk to include people who use walkers, canes, and wheelchairs.
Counsel Adrian.
So recently with, uh, the snowstorms, many people were calling me saying that the sidewalks were still not shoveled properly. Uh, for example, one day when I took the bus, uh, the bus driver had to take twenty minutes to try to shovel the sidewalk to get a gentleman who was on the wheelchair right on Ferry Street to get on the bus. And it seems like people are just not, uh, following if they're supposed to shovel the sidewalk within a number of feet. So I just want to make sure that we have this in the ordinance and that we're enforcing this, because I'm noticing a lot of people walking in the street, which delays traffic, and make sure is that people are not being saved, so. I also wanted to make, to refer this to Legislative Affairs.
Anybody you'd like to invite?
Nope.
Okay, I would suggest, my code enforcement, seeing as they're the ones that enforce the, uh, snow removal ordinance.
Okay.
Just to be able to get some feedback on what they're actually doing. Uh, okay, we have a motion for item number thirty, I'm sorry, thirty going to Legislative Affairs, inviting, uh, code enforcement. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number thirty-one.
Item thirty-one, Mr. Chairman, is a resolution offered by Counsel Girlie Adrian, to review the snow removal ordinance to ensure safety on the sidewalk and corners and shovel, are shoveled, cleaned out to comply with ADA requirements instead of piling snow around it.
Counsel Adrian.
So similar to the one that I just said, also the corners. So for example, if you So, similar to the one that I just said, also the corners, so for example, if you own a house on the corners, noticing that snow is just piling up on the corners, and so people who have wheelchairs, again, cannot get onto the sidewalk. So, just making sure that the corner is cleared for them to be able to actually get on the sidewalk. So, I refer this to Legislative Affairs and also invite code enforcement.
We have a motion to take item number 31, turn it to Legislative Affairs, like code enforcement. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 32.
Item 32, Mr. Chairman, is a resolution offered by Council Girlie Adrian that the city review the towing regulations fines to ensure it's equitable for the residents.
Councilman Adrian.
Yes, so this was another concern that I received from a lot of residents. They are upset with how towing is being done and the fines. So, I just want to make sure that when we are putting in the fines and the regulations that we are considering the residents, their income, if this is something that they can afford. I have at least received two emails last week about towing, and a part of my listening tour, this was probably the third most talked about topic. So, I just want to make sure we're reviewing the regulations and the towing and making sure it's equitable for every resident. So, I would like to refer this to the Traffic Commission.
If I could, from the chair, I think you also might want to invite, if you're gonna review the ordinances, you want to invite the two towing companies that are licensed to do the towing.
Yeah, totally.
Actually, we set the, bring on the ordinance, we want the ordinance, right? Yeah, actually. We don't set the rate, but we set the ordinance. Let's review the ordinance and then we should go down. I think, one moment.
In general, too, so not just for the snowstorm, so like.
Sleeping.
Yeah, totally.
And they only take cash?
Yes.
All right, so you're, we're gonna refer, you're referring this to traffic?
Yeah.
Okay, and you want to invite, there are two tow companies that do all the towing, Quailey and Pauls.
Yeah.
Yeah, we definitely invite them. They might have some input.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 33.
Item 33, Mr. Chairman, is a resolution offered by Council Girlie Adrian that the city increase the time for all Everett crosswalk lights to increase by adding 20 more seconds.
So, this is another concern that I have. During the fall, I had three seniors actually show me that, how they crossed the street and how they couldn't make it in time, particularly on Broadway. So, this was a concern for me. Even today, walking here, I didn't get it through in time, and I'm 30 years old and I'm a former athlete. So, I was wondering if we could just increase the number of seconds. So, in the city of Somerville and Medford, theirs is actually 15 more seconds longer than ours. So, I was just hoping that if we can't do 20, at least a little bit more, because this was another concern that I saw from seniors and people who have walkers and wheelchairs. I just want to make sure they can get through the street. This one's the Traffic Commission.
Could send it to the wire department to fix the timing.
City Services.
Oh, yes.
Is it quite the correct location of these City Services?
Yeah, I just, I got, I just got a memo from Jay Monty. I have not had time to read it, but I did get this memo from him. I don't know if everyone else did. No, maybe I was the only one, but.
Where would you like this to go?
The Traffic, Traffic Commission.
Did the memo say traffic?
Yeah. Yeah, from Jay.
We have a motion, actually, it's not our committees. Council Mutuski.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I agree with Councilwoman Adrian's intent here. I experienced in Everett Square at Chelsea Street, people, the light, you're halfway through the light and then it changes now. It wasn't like that, you know, it's off and on. I think the wire department needs to go down. They've been tinkering with the lights in Everett Square for a while, even for the motorists. I mean, Norwood Street was backed up to, to Main Street almost because the lights weren't changing. And there was a guy in that box, a man working on the electrical box near the clock, and I said, oh, my goodness. But needless to say, there were a lot of elderly in the square, and the timing should be a little bit longer, and I agree with Councilwoman Adrian, and I would have sent this to the wire department to go down there and change the timing on that light, but, but that's not the only one. There's one in Glendale Square that's just as bad. But I agree with the intention. Pedestrian safety is very important. We just had these new crosswalks put in. They're very helpful, and I hope that they, seeing how the president's talking to the sponsor, I can speak a little longer, so.
Oh, add, oh, add to what you're saying, so I agree.
But anyway, I agree. Even on Revere Beach Parkway, now that I know that's the state, you're taking your life in your hands crossing that. I had a guy today, actually, told me, he was, he says, wait, I only made it to one side of the parkway, I had to press the button again. But anyway.
I would have caught you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, I didn't hit five minutes either, but.
And I would have represented.
Oh, thank you, Councilor. But anyway, you know, the intention here is to fix the light. There are timing problems, not only with pedestrians, with the flow of traffic.
And, right.
Yeah, they're aiming the car at this point. But anyway, thank you, Councilwoman Adrian, for bringing this very important piece to the agenda tonight. I agree with it.
I agree with both, and I want to add that sometimes it's not just the timing, but you're going with the timing, but their car's turning also. So, you're trying to cross within that time, but their car's turning right and left, like from different places, but. Yeah, so after speaking with the chairperson, it's recommended to send this to the City Services and Wire Division?
Second. Second. Do we have a motion to send this to City Services and the Wire Division? All in.
I'm sorry, I had my hand out. And everybody spoke.
Council DePiero. I'm a Council DeFlorio. I'm a.
Well, I don't care. Everybody else spoke. So, the point I'm trying to say is, I spoke to Jay, this is a great piece. I spoke to Jay Monty. I'm a pretty fast walker. I might be a senior, but I can walk pretty fast. You can't make that light.
I agree.
So, they're saying that it's because they want to keep the traffic flow going. So, I had recommended that during the day, the seniors, you know, usually by five, six o'clock, they are not crossing the street, or maybe they are, but try it, where during the day, it's a longer period. And then at night, during the traffic hour, you keep the traffic going. So, I don't know what came out of that, but that's why I had said to all the City Services, but also send a copy to Jay Monty because they're the ones that work on the lights also, so thank you.
And I would suggest a response back.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll send it to City Services, Wire Division, Jay Monty, and a request back in 30 days. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 34.
Item 34, is a resolution offered by Council Girlie Adrian that the city of Everett work with the city of Somerville to review the traffic light located on Route 99 Bridge near Encore to check if the lights are synced timed properly.
Council, Council.
Yeah, I just want to amend this to say the city of Boston, not the city of Somerville.
We have amendment to cross out Somerville, but in Boston. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it. Glad you saw the floor.
And I just want to refer this to the mayor's Office of Community Development to work with the city of Boston. I don't know if Jay also gave me, it looks like he did, but I'm not too sure if he gave me one, but. Yeah, I still want to refer it to them, yep.
Council, you might want to touch base with Jay Monty. There was a piece last, last fall, last year about syncing up the lights at 99 through the Rutherford Ave. I believe that's, that's the area you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Reach out to him to get an update as far as where, where that stands right now. Be able to get more direct information. In the meantime, having it sent to him for response back, as will for your colleagues as well. The city of Boston controls that. You're right, they have to be coordinated with them. Okay, so we have a motion to send this, we, Community Development.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 35.
Oh, does.
Somebody reads it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna read.
I don't, okay. Do you want me to read it?
No, I have it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Item 35 is a, Mr. Chairman, is a resolution offered by Council Adrian that to request the Everett Library Director at a bookmobile program for the Everett libraries.
Council Adrian.
Yeah, so I wanted to see more of this during the spring and the summer, particularly when it comes to the parks and our events. It'd be great to see the library actually some, bring some of what they offer, some of the books, so that the children, the adults can see what the services are provided, not just go to the mortar building. They'll be actually able to see it, where they are at the parks or different locations in Everett. So, I wanted to see if the acting library director would consider this. And so, I try to refer this to the mayor's office.
Okay, so you want to refer it to the mayor's office and the acting director of the libraries?
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 36.
Item number 36 is a, Mr. Chairman, is a resolution offered by Council Girlie Adrian to request the mayor and his staff explained how the Everett Citizens Foundation members were selected and if everyone on the committee's input was valued, i.e., did every member on the committee have a vote on where the $150,000 should be allocated?
Council Adrian.
Yeah, so this has been brought up to my attention from several of the community organizations that they got a negative vote score and that the process was not fair and transparent. As well, I found out that there was two members on the committee who were actually told that they didn't have a vote and that they had to follow who the top 10 people were chosen. I just want to make sure that the casino money that was coming in to help our community is being dispersed the right and fair and transparent way and to make sure that everybody who was on the committee had an input and to make sure that those community organizations have a chance to understand why they weren't chosen. So, I'm trying to refer this to, it looks like, the Public Safety and Public Service Committee and request their attendance to also speak on it.
Second motion. We have a motion, it's been seconded. The only one who can speak, Councilman, is the, is the sponsor. Motion, favorable, excuse me, to refer this to committee, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Government Operations. And then there's just the worksheet item, Council Adrian, that the DPW director look into replacing the blinking light located near Highway 16, BNY Mellon, Best Buy, due to safety concerns for our residents. This will be written by DPW.
A motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
Before we adjourn, as we've done in the past when we have new members, we have two of our three new members who have had items on the agenda tonight, who have spoken on it. I commend them for their efforts. I just want to give congratulations. There's, on February 6th, there's a student opportunity, a public hearing at the Everett High School Library, February 6th at 6:00 PM, okay? Public is invited. We have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor? Posed? The ayes have it. We're adjourned.